She's excused. Secretary Rebecca Daniels, present. Mayor Patrick Wimberlin, did you get anything from here?
I did not. And I don't believe the planning department did either yet. No. Okay.
Commissioner Darryl Davis. Commissioner Darryl.
We thought you was go.
Commissioner Matt Willis.
Present.
Commissioner Tanya Williams, she's excused as well. For our chair, Commissioner Javon Hall, anything from him? He's running. Okay. Commissioner Cheryl Hayes Bradford.
Present.
Okay, Mr. Chair, you do have a call.
Thank you. You now proceed to item number two, adoption of the agenda. Has everybody had the opportunity to review tonight's agenda?
Yes.
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 All right, floor is open for motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved. Second.
Properly moved and second, is there any discussion to amend the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. You now proceed to item number three, adoption of the minutes. It's two different dates. That is September twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-two, and adoption of October twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the draft minutes?
Yes.
All right, the floor is open for motion to approve this as presented.
So move. Second.
Should properly move and second, is there any discussion to amend the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. You now proceed to item number four, first hearing of the public for items on the agenda but not scheduled for a public hearing. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak on agenda items not listed under item number five, public hearings at this time. If there is anyone from the public who would like to speak, please come to the podium and state your name for the record.
Hello, my name is Benita Carter.
Good evening, how you doing?
I'm pretty good, how are you?
Good.
I was in attendance at the last planning commission meeting. And I mentioned to the planning commission meeting that I was having an issue with the property. Two-seven-two-zero-three Michigan Avenue. Councilperson Chisholm, you said that you were gonna follow up with this issue, so I just wanted to know if you had gotten contact with the property owners or, you know, I'm not really sure if I'm going about this the right way, but this particular property is right on Michigan Avenue, it's a historical property, and I believe that myself, the city of Inster, the planning commission, we should all have a vested interest in this. So I just, you know, I'm here to ask about that.
You know what? We had a transition. The police department stepped out. And she actually was actually watching that for six or nine too. And so I'm gonna have to see who to follow up with now, since that's no longer on her plate. Just to find out exactly. Remind, did you say contact or just already before or?
The issue is, is that I tried to take adverse possession of the property. I'm not sure if I was clear about the laws of adverse possession, but in adverse possession, if the property is dilapidated to the point that you're able to just walk in, you're able to take possession of the property, so that's what I tried to do. But I was foiled at that by Inster Police Department. So the next thing that I tried to do was try to reach out to the owner of the property and rent to own the property from her. The person is older, and her family is kind of taking advantage of her and stopping me from renting this property. That's why when I came to the last planning commission meeting, I asked the city of Inster to take eminent domain of the property. And that's why I came to this planning meeting today, because I was hoping between doing all of this, that maybe, you know, someone had followed up and heard my pleas about this property. I was under the impression too that this property maybe had fell into this green zone that we're supposed to be talking about today. But it's actually on the other side of Inster Road, so.
Do you have any, um, like your kind of information now for me? Do you have a piece of paper?
This is really important to me. This is a historical property. It belongs to someone who was in the military. The city of Inster named the block after this woman. There's no reason that the house should be sitting on the corner falling to pieces.
Right, the name, phone number, even the best.
Okay. I'm trying to avoid reaching out to Wayne County in the state of Michigan or whoever to get this property torn down. But it turned a hundred years old this year, and I thought it would be in the best interest of the city of Inster to maintain a historical property right in the middle of our city.
Okay, yeah, jot the information out so we can, uh.
I've met with the mayor about this already.
Because, I mean, again, is someone's private property?
Well, it's dilapidated. The ordinance department has not issued any tickets about it since two thousand and nineteen. It's literally gonna just fall to the ground if no one does anything.
Yeah, write that down for me, that will, I'll send that over tonight while we're here.
I have reasons to believe that the water department here sent me a bill for the property. So I feel like I have equitable title to this property, and my next move is to take the owner to Third District Court for acquiring title suit. But I'm not trying to sue an old lady to cause a bunch of trouble in the city of Inster.
And that's kind of concerning or confusing too, that the water department was sending you a bill.
Somebody named June A. sent it right to my email.
Sent the bill to your, why are water bills on kind of emails?
They sent something from the water department, something about that house, so between my address being on the property with USPS and me receiving a water bill and my personal property still being in the home, I'm really beginning to feel like it's my house. And I don't want it sitting up on the Ave looking ugly. So I need some help with this. It's supposed to be Ms. Lester's house, so I named the block after Ms. Lily Lester. So why isn't the city of Inster supporting her in maintaining its property? Why is it being allowed to sit on a corner and rot for the last six years? Why y'all ordinance department ain't run no ticket since two thousand and nineteen about it?
Commissioner Willis.
What'd you say your name was again?
Benita Carter.
Carter.
Yes, C-A-R-T-E.
Question, uh, how did your property get into the property? How'd your private property get into the property?
The adverse possession thing.
So you just went in there and put your stuff in there?
Yes, the property is just able to be walked right into, even right now as we speak, I could just walk right in there if I wanted to.
You do realize that's still trespassing because the property is still owned by someone else?
I was told that President Biden issued an executive order, something in regards to squatters rights, that basically there is no more arresting squatters. I, I, I'm really, I'm just not trying to hear what y'all trying to tell me about the all dilapidated dirty house sitting up on the hill.
We don't have to discuss this.
Somebody has to do something about it.
You don't have to hear anything that we, just, there you go, thank you.
I just want the right thing to happen by the property.
I just don't want us to get it to.
Thank you, Councilor, thank you.
All right, I need your information, ma'am. All right, okay, cool. Okay. Gotcha.
The eminent domain thing, that came from people on that block. The neighbors that have to look at that house being dilapidated every day suggested that to me.
Gotcha.
Yeah, I'm trying to give my real estate license, and that one was in the real estate book. I'm trying to come at this from all angles to do, like I said, what's best for the city of Inster and what's best for the property.
All righty, thank you very much. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak at this time? If so, please approach the podium and state your name for the record.
Already seeing no one, we now proceed to item number five, public hearings. The floor is open for a motion to open the public hearing for item A, case number two-two-dash-three-four, text amendment, amendment of marijuana uses and standards.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? All opposed? Motion passes, the public hearing is now over. City planner, you have the floor. The microphone on? Okay.
The standard that marijuana businesses must follow in the place.
Thank you.
Uh, so the city has two ordinances that regulate marijuana in the community, one is chapter one fifty-five and zoning ordinance that regulates the location of where marijuana businesses are and the standards they must follow. The other is chapter one twenty-four that regulates the eligibility criteria for marijuana businesses and the licensing application. While planning commission has direct authority over chapter one fifty-five as specialists in planning and zoning, one, chapter one twenty-four updates which regard the regulation of the business licensing is not a topic of planning. Both are provided as a courtesy because the two ordinances go hand in hand, and planning staff is seeking back on both ordinances. Anyone who is commenting on these ordinances, we would ask for you to specify what ordinance you're discussing. Uh, as a reminder, the planning commission must provide either a recommendation of approval or grounds for denial to the city council on the ordinance update. City council has the final authority on approving or denying ordinance updates or text amendment. I want to highlight some key topic items in, in chapter one fifty-five. Uh, so this would introduce the green zone and remove location buffers, separation buffers, and that's area that green zone is located between Henry Ralph and Middlebelt. My notes here. And would continue to have the five hundred foot separation from the green zone. This would allow, uh, businesses to open up without being separated from one another. They would still need to be going through a special land use process. Other is to add potential uses, so this would add a designated consumption establishment, which is a location where marijuana products can be produced. It would also allow for special events to, uh, take place within the city of Inster following the standards outlined in chapter one fifty-five update. And also providing two options on marijuana, marijuana can be allowed, so we have two tables defining, uh, where we're proposing special land use, if permitted, uses of marijuana to be found. You'll find in the second, uh, option that may be strictly working to just within the green zone. This is all that, we cover the criteria to benefit the health, safety, and wellbeing of the community by providing, um, item for graduation on air quality for growers and processors and also marijuana businesses and new base standards as well. Uh, so then key topic items in the chapter one twenty-four update are the introduction of all these possible types of marijuana-related business licenses, including the designated consumption establishment, research, and event organizers. It also requires the applicant fit within one of the four categories in order to apply and open a marijuana business in the city. This requirement adds social equity components to the business licensing process. These, uh, four new standards would be that the applicant must live within one of the one hundred and eighty-four Michigan communities that have been disproportionately impacted by marijuana prohibition and enforcement as founded by the Cannabis Regulatory Agency for at least five to ten years. That's the state agency that regulates, uh, all cannabis licensing in Michigan. The applicant, or the applicant must have evidence of a marijuana conviction, either misdemeanor or felony or marijuana-related offense. Or the applicant must have been registered as a primary caregiver under the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act for at least two years between two thousand and eight and two thousand and seventeen. Or the fourth option being the applicant must be a gold level participant of the Cannabis Regulatory Agency Social Equity All-Star Program and provide all documents, not only to the state of Michigan, but also to the city of Inster. These public documents would become publicly available, and gold level participants would be required to provide the city of Inster a statement, uh, allowing for these plans to be posted online, the actual social equity plan, and then a corporate spend plan, so this section would need to have a dedicated percentage of the business's annual spending to, uh, create some sort of corporate give back to the community. Updates of chapter one twenty-four would also change the business license procedures to make planning department the first step of approval in which the planner will verify the zoning and then the applicant falls within one of the four categories. It also has added milestones, um, and deadlines, so the applicant moves actively forward within their proposed business. This also allows for clarification on who establishes the separation buffers in those areas outside of the green zone. So if a business comes in, they apply first, that establishes the buffer when they apply and get their zoning verification. If there's two businesses that are in conflict that apply at the same time, that would open up a lottery. Um, so just to keep in mind that, uh, as we move forward, please try to distinguish between your comments on chapter one twenty-four and chapter one fifty-five. And if you have any, uh, questions, we're here to answer them. But hopefully that was an overview as a highlighter of what was included in your packet.
Thank you. Oh, this is a public hearing, so are there any further comments or questions from the public? I'm sorry, this is a public hearing, so therefore anybody from the general public has an opportunity to come up to the podium and speak or inquire about the matters that, um, Ms. Dixon just read off. So anybody from the general public, please feel free at this time to approach the podium and state your name for the record.
Hi, Benita Carter again.
Good evening.
I'm really feeling a little bit in over my head as far as like commenting on this whole thing. I think my comment is pursuant to section one twenty-five. This proposed green zone, it already has a lot of businesses in it. So where exactly are we squeezing in these marijuana development facilities? And I guess my comments are more just kind of general comments and things that are like, I'm piggybacking off of what I've heard in the community. The last city council meeting that I was at, the comment was made that everyone that comes through Inster to go to the airport or just to go places around, they have to see everything that's on Michigan Avenue. Why is the focus so much on marijuana? Why is that all y'all want people to see when they ride through Michigan from Henry Ralph to Middlebelt? There's really not much city after that. From Middlebelt, it goes Inster Road, and then the city's pretty much over, and like, that just, I, I'm really not for this plan. I remember reading online that they said there is a surplus of grow for marijuana cultivation facilities, and that the state is actually considering trying to stop the growers. So why are you guys focused on trying to make our city a city for growers, and that might not even be a viable thing in years to come? I think as a city that's centered around traffic that goes to airports, to malls and all of that, there should be something better for this green zone. Like, maybe can this focus be more on the consumption facilities and less on the processing plants? Because I thought we already had a pretty well-sized processing plant here on John Daly and, you know, right down the street from the city council. So I, I just want you guys to be prudent in the decisions that you make when you plan for the city. It seems like this plan was almost made for someone that has a personal agenda that furthers what's maybe best for them and not what's best for Inster overall. I, um, said at a council meeting before that I was considering running for Inster, and my constituents, we'd actually like to have a four-wheeler track in you guys' green zone. There's a, um, old auto place called Howard's Auto that's been abandoned for quite some time. I'm not sure if Howard's Auto is the name of it, but it's like a, a old, uh, trailer, and it used to be a car lot. It looks like the perfect place for a four-wheeler track, and that speaks a little bit more to the culture of Inster. That's something that I remember people doing in the community when I was growing up. Everything here doesn't have to be about marijuana just because it's legal now. We have lots of marijuana, uh, facilities on the avenue already. I think Mr. Hall, so good to see you, so glad you could make it. Just, like I said, a little bit more thought consideration into what's going in this green zone, and if anything, um, maybe kind of expand the area that you guys are looking at for a green zone? Because, again, from Henry Ralph to Middlebelt, it doesn't seem like there's a lot of space there, like there's a U-Haul there, there's two very prestigious nightclubs right there. Bogarts is right there. I was hoping they were gonna somehow buy that golf course back and turn it back into a golf course, but I guess maybe it would be better for the city for it to just be a marijuana facility. And at the last planning commission meeting, I thought you guys had already approved for one marijuana processing facility to be right there on Henry Ralph and Michigan Avenue. So like, just how many do you need in one tight space? And then, this is gonna be my last thing, you said for like, you know, certain things to speak specifically to certain, you know, amendments or whatever, something in this just said something about the establishments can't have any neon lights or any like, like some of this verbiage in, in this stuff, it doesn't even make any sense. Whatever ordinances you guys are trying to like put on to make having marijuana facilities more like tightly regulated is unnecessary to me. Because I thought the state of Michigan and their marijuana program was supposed to be a national model. So why does the city of Inster feel it necessary to write in more things in their ordinances to just make it harder for people to get licenses for these types of things? I also read something in there that said you would have to have proof of a marijuana conviction to open up one of these facilities? So where does that leave people like me who's never been convicted of a marijuana charge? So just please, I, I don't want to debate the whole verbiage right here on the mic. I'm gonna go back and read the agenda a little bit more, but I just want you guys to, you know, hear my comments, take them under consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, you did say quite a bit, um, and I was actually going to
If I may.
Go right ahead.
Uh, I just wanted to offer a few items for clarification. Uh, the processing and growers are not allowed in, on Michigan Avenue currently, and they wouldn't be allowed in this new plan. It's only for, uh, consumption establishment micro businesses, retailers, and, uh, ultimately, we're trying to balance more marijuana, you know, coming into the community. We are here that the community doesn't necessarily want more marijuana, so this is, you know, potentially a balance to offer some more, uh, restrictions that would probably balance it, and uh, I think that the state of Michigan does have a great model, and we're actually incorporating a lot of the state's language in our businesses licensing. So we're using the social equity program from the state, we're using their, you know, gold star kind of, they have to reach a certain level that's based off state recommendation. And you don't necessarily have to have a conviction, it's kind of one of the four options, so you can move forward without any sort of past experience with marijuana, as long as you hit that gold star social equity program that the state has outlined. Thank you.
Thank you. Absolutely. Um, and I was gonna let you know, so Ms. Carter, one of the things that, you know, when I was actually working for the state of Michigan and Lansing, when bills get passed, all the fine tuning is not done. And so when all of this was dropped down from the state and it was approved, and cities were able to start opting in, it's been a fluid situation ever since. So every year, every six months, something else is changing, and they, instead of doing, putting all the teeth in it at the state level, the cities have been left holding the ball, trying to figure out how do we balance this? How do we say we don't want this without getting sued? How do we say we want this only in one area without getting sued? Because nine out of ten times, people gonna, they'll turn around and sue. And you're trying to figure out, okay, what's the balance, since we're in this game already?
It's a little heavy on the avenue right now for dispensaries. We already have two dispensaries, you know, across Middlebelt, they're not in the green zone, but we have plenty dispensaries in Inster.
And that's, that's one of the reasons too, like when, uh,
This almost poses the issue of like, too much competition amongst the dispensaries in the city, like, have you guys talked to the owners of the dispensaries? Like, well, I guess they should be here today, huh?
Well, that's one of the reasons about the green zone is try to, trying to mitigate it at this point, because when this, these amendments were amended in the past, um, it kind of, if you open the floodgates, and people were starting to say, but just go everywhere. Our, our model used to say that we only had three medical licenses, well, we opted in the recreational, we were trying to, one, I'm not gonna say we, because I can't speak for everybody. Some intense were on the floor to co-locate them, so instead of having, if you will, six dispensaries, you could have still three buildings, but each one held two licenses. It didn't pan out like that. So now that they're popping up all around and stuff, if we have a green zone, we can, um, I don't want to say restrict them, but they will be in that specific area, so we don't have to worry about the rest of the city. Someone coming in buying up a building and saying, I want to drop here, and we have to go through this process, then you or anybody else from the general public is back before us voicing your concerns about why do we have so many? Because you hit a certain point, you hit a cap, and it's like, okay, when do we stop? And like you said, it'd be like the car industry, or it'd be like the housing market, where there were too many car dealerships up and down Michigan Avenue.
That's what this is looking like, a slippery slope becoming to be in too many dispensaries up and down the avenue. I'm aware of a situation right now where there's a property across from Inster Fire Department, they want to make that a dispensary, but they're not getting the planning commissions, go ahead, whatever the case may be, they can't get their property zone to be a dispensary. I just do not want to see Michigan Avenue, the part that goes through Inster, be all dispensaries and that's it. There's hotels, there's restaurants, there are historical businesses with vintage signs, and just more viable options, better things that could be in the city.
Absolutely.
The city of Inster is shaped like a square. Why y'all don't branch these dispensaries out and put them in little pockets and corners and just do something different?
And that was one of the concerns, I don't know if you heard from citizens, when you were talking to the business owners or the applicants, if you, who were here, they're saying, well, what else are you putting in there? And they name those different restaurants and retail stores, things that we're gonna be bringing in. Um, with the intent that if their dispensary or their retail, uh, uh, marijuana business implodes, these other options are still there for our citizens to frequent. Uh, this is, I'm gonna just be honest with you, this will, this could be a discussion for all night. And I don't think there will ever be a common ground on either side or a compromise that will be at.
I just wanted to be known, my beef isn't with the dispensaries per se, my beef is just with too much of the same of anything in one area.
Absolutely, same with gas stations, liquor stores, and anything else you wanted.
We want diversity to, uh, you know, push financial growth in Inster. We don't want all of the same thing up and down the avenue. It just doesn't make any sense for the people that have businesses there or for the community.
I agree.
Diverse businesses are what grow a community, right?
Absolutely.
Thank you, guys.
All righty, thank you. Are there any further comments from the public?
Miss.
Right ahead, Commissioner.
What I was wondering, because I, I was under the impression that the green zone was also kind of trying to pitch, and if, if I'm wrong, you can correct me, where we trying to actually establish a place where they didn't have to go through such scrutiny uh, in that particular area. But also, I thought it was to kind of put a hard stop to maybe new marijuana places coming up, and the older ones that have been here that were kind, would be kind of grandfathered in, am I correct in that? We, and this is such a new situation that, that we're being confronted with that's come down from the state, and we're having to put legislation in place that was never there before. It's a new situation, it was always illegal. So now we've got something new we're trying to regulate that was never been, had never been regulated before, but you have to do it gingerly because people will sue at the drop of a hat, and we can't afford all of that. So we've got to be able to use some wisdom about how we go and move forward to stop this train. We agree with you with the diversity on Michigan Avenue, we want it as well as you do. But there's a way that it has to be done. And, and, and we are doing our best to try to do that in a way that's going to keep the, the fallout from hitting the city. You understand? That's what my understanding was, so it's not that we want a whole bunch of marijuana places, but if they have that green zone and that's just, you go here and nowhere else, you know what I'm saying? After that, then we could just kind of move out in other areas.
Another one of my issues with this green zone is that it's about a mile and a mile and a half away from what I would say is like the big center, like shopping center in Inster, that strip mall on the corner in Michigan and Inster, that's like where all the big center, like shopping center in Incester, that strip mall on the corner of Michigan and Incester, that's like where all, all the older people that live in those towers, all the kids, everybody, you know, I, I, I hate to say, you know, lesser income people, but is that what is left around here? But that's the majority where you see people and their kids and their families shopping at. So y'all want to put a whole bunch of dispensaries, like within walking distance of where all these people shop with their families and their kids? It's just, I'm sorry, y'all plans just don't sit right with me, I don't like it. Like, please try to, uh, go back to the drawing board and come with something better. If anything, I think, uh, uh, something better would be to a, at least expand the green zone. You tried to pack it in so tight right there between, but there are other dispensaries right outside of this proposed green zone, it doesn't make any sense. If y'all do want to try to, uh, revitalize and put some businesses on the avenue, at least utilize the whole part of the avenue that we have through Incester. Like, eve, like the area that y'all even put in it is not aesthetically or visually appealing. I don't understand, like, like I said, I feel like the, the thoughtfulness of it, it was for someone's personal agenda. Okay, I'm still pulling for that go-kart track.
It's all about balance.
And again, tonight, just, you know, for the, our record, this is just the public hearing. All we'll do is end up recommending this up to the city council, uh, whether we recommend for approval or recommend for denial, we don't have a final say-so at this level. So, um, your voice and concerns can be further addressed, uh, at, at the next Incester City Council meeting about this particular item.
I just wanted everyone here to be aware, I don't see too many other people from the people that's my age or that represent my demographic.
Very appreciate you. Is there anyone else from the general public? Aaron, um. Any discussion further from this body? Alrighty. Floor is open for motion to close the public hearing. Second, it's been properly moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes, public hearing is now closed. We have no unfinished business. We now proceed to item number seven, new business. Case number, um, uh, case number twenty-two dash thirty-four text amendment. Oh yeah, text amendment of marijuana uses and standards. Review in consideration of text amendments in chapter one fifty-five, article twenty-nine, to include additional definitions, and article one forty-six, to include additional uses and standards, and chapter one twenty-four, to update the business licensing standards. City planner, you have a floor.
Well, I know, I gave you the rundown, if you have any further questions, I'm happy to discuss them with the body at this point. I think this, hopefully, the goal of this is to balance this use and, uh, we have remained within the special use as well, so this will have to go through the process of approval, uh, for each individual business that wants to open based off of our special few standards.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion, anybody? Seeing none, the floor is open for a motion to recommend approval of the request.
Make a motion to improve the building and marijuana use and standards of chapter one thirty-five, article twenty-nine, article one forty-six, chapter one twenty-four, to update the business license standards.
It's been properly moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We're down to item B. Discuss Lemoine Gardens conceptual plan unit development. Review and offer feedback on the conceptual site plan for the redevelopment of Lemoine Gardens. City planner, you have a floor. Or engage, planning department.
Mr. Gay. Mr. Gay. We can't, we can't hear you. It is, it's very long.
Okay.
Alright, so we have, it's our, we can, uh, as part of informational discussion, um, to discuss this conceptual site plan of the, 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 members of the housing commission are also present to support the conversation. Um, and I would like to invite the applicants to, uh, tell the house to stop it.
Thank you. Uh, Incester Housing Commission, commissioners, applicants, please approach. And of course, state your name for the record and, I guess, position with everything.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Planning Commission members, my name is Glenn Hudson, and I'm with, um, the Rich Bay Group.
Good afternoon, or good evening, Commissioner. Um, I'm Aaron Cooper, I'm our executive director for the House.
Good evening, I'm Jim Pappas, I'm with Fusco Schaefer and Pappas Architects. And if, uh, through the chair, if I could pass out, uh, some site plans to the commissions.
Word along.
We're here this evening just for a, a quick overview of the master plan. Noted, uh, by the planner, the, uh, the intent is to submit for phase one, uh, site plan approval application, uh, in the near future, uh, to start the process, uh, for the project. Uh, currently, there are two hundred and seventy-five units in Lemoine Gardens, uh, the majority of those are uh, townhomes, uh, stacked flats, and ranch units. Uh, as part of the master plan, the new master plan that you have in front of you, uh, what we're proposing, uh, in the southern portion of the site are three, uh, three-story buildings, uh, which opens up a lot of open green space through those areas because we can get a little bit more density in these structures, uh, opens up more green space throughout the site. And then the northern portion of the site, uh, is planned again for more like a townhouse design. Uh, some of the reasons for that, along the southern portion of the property, you have some denser multifamily, uh, buildings directly across, Liberty, on the northern portion of the site, you have more just single-family homes in those areas. So really, the, the concept of the master plan was to get the higher density, uh, along Henry Rough, uh, or across the street, you really don't have any single-family. And to the south, where you don't have any adjacent single-family, and, and then in the northern portion of the site, uh, to construct the townhouses, so they'll be more in line with the adjacent single-family to the north of the site. The proposed design, uh, currently, uh, will take place in three phases. Uh, phase one will be this, uh, first building, uh, which is sixty units. Uh, it'll be located on the corner of, uh, Henry Rough and Liberty. Phase two will be these buildings, which will be a hundred and sixteen units, uh, on Liberty Street, and in phase three is ninety-nine units, which account for the remainder of the, uh, townhome-style buildings that will be in the, in the project. As I mentioned, there's currently, uh, two hundred and seventy-five units on the entire site that includes this area. And throughout the, these open green spaces that you see, uh, when the project is complete in the three phases, there will still be two hundred and seventy-five units. So we're not adding any density, but we are opening up the space with the discussions with the housing commission. One of the things that was brought up that there's, uh, not a lot of open space on the overall site, uh, and so that was part of the, uh, planning process to get a little bit more open space. Again, this was strictly for, uh, initial presentation informational purposes, we're not here asking for any uh, approvals, and we will be back, uh, as part of phase, phase, the first phase, uh, with the complete package for, for that particular project, but we're here to answer any question the commission may have of the, uh, architect, the development team, and housing commissioner. Here for your questions.
Uh, Commissioner, uh, well, look, Commissioner Davis go first, and then Commissioner Willis.
Is this gonna be taking, uh, uh, additional properties and building new properties?
No, it's, it's.
So renovate the old properties?
Correctly, it's strictly the, the land that is currently Lemoine Gardens, phase one and phase two of the original, is the identical property that will be in this development.
Well, it's gonna be the same.
Yes.
Building, it's up, everything will be, they may not be refurbished.
No, all new.
It's gonna be all new, so, tearing down that. Tearing it down, that's what I'm saying.
Oh, yes, yes.
I live in Westbrook, Philly, except we share that property. Yeah, it's gonna be brand new.
All new. Alrighty. Commissioner Willis.
Well, I have, um, do y'all intend to, uh, put any kind of, uh, recreational, like, like, uh, for the children, anything like that?
That's, uh, there will be recreation space in part of phase one, and each, each phase will have recreational space built into it, yes.
Okay. Willis.
We, uh, we've been through, we still are, uh, kind of exhausted process when we get the rest of our feet. So this plan that we're showing, this preliminary plan is not necessarily into power of the commission. In a huddle, saying this is what we did, we went through a process, they're, they're, we're bringing the residents to get their feedback. So what we're presenting is based on the residents being there, because it's for them. So that's essentially some of your question was spacing, that's why we have so much green space, not too many.
Okay, Isaac, go to, closer to the microphone. Any other questions, commissioners?
So this is all still remaining, uh, public housing, right?
Yeah, it's, it's gonna be a combination, it's more of a, what's called an affordable housing style. Um, but what HUD does not allow us to do is displace any current residents.
And so when you tear stuff down, where do the residents go?
Well, they'll have an option to return, cause again, HUD does not allow us to displace them. Um, so if they're there on site, um, they're able to return. Um, but they also have other options, HUD allows other options, so if they would like to move off-site, um, we have avenues that we can provide that for them, so they can look at avenues like a housing choice voucher in different creative ways, but no one is displaced, HUD does not allow.
Anybody else?
Yes, I just wanted to make sure I'm clear, cause I think, um, Commissioner Willis, I'm not Willis, but Williams, I'm sorry, Davis, started, and I think you misunderstood him, so I just want to make sure I'm clear. Phase one and two, or all of this, is gonna be totally torn down, is phase one and two renovations, and phase three.
Phases one, two, and three will all be new construction.
So that means that you're actually tearing down the buildings that are currently there?
Yes.
And they will be all brand-new buildings?
Yes.
Cause you did start off saying phase one and two, and like you was gonna say something else different about phase three.
No, it's, it's ident, it's a different, a little bit different style of housing.
It's a different style.
Correct, but everything will be, and it's done in phases, so some of the, uh, a number of the units on-site are currently vacant, so that was one of, so people will be moved around as well, so you know, you're concerned about people being displaced. So it's, that's one of the reasons, it's not, everything won't be tore down and just sit there, it'll be in step by step.
So that you can move people accordingly?
Correct.
And then just because of what you said, you said it's not really public housing affordable, like, so what really, what is it really?
It's still public housing, it's just, we use a different term, we call it affordable housing, cause there's different mixtures of income. So that's, that's kind of HUD's overall goal, they're not rebuilding public housing, they're not even funding fully the current public housing, which is why it's in the conditions that they are across the country. Um, so what they're doing is deconcentrating poverty by kind of dividing up some of the income streams. Uh, so again, everybody will be able to return. A number of people typically don't, they typically want to leave, they want to go take the voucher route, they want to do different things, which opens up opportunities for others with other income, so for instance, maybe sixty percent of the area meeting income, eighty percent, thirty, there, there'll be a mixture. Um, so it's, the term is affordable housing, quote-unquote, it's just not straight public housing. So you hear that term a lot.
So with that term?
Yeah, it's, cause I don't.
With that term affordable housing, affordable as to whose standard?
Go ahead.
Well, in, in really sort of the source of the funding will come from probably MISTA, um, with low-income housing tax credits. And under the, um, low-income housing tax credit program, um, we cannot serve families above sixty percent of the area meeting income for this particular area here. Now, um, also, there will be vouchers, so the tenants will only pay thirty percent of their income towards their rents, um, as well. So the project will serve families at sixty percent and below, and we would have some families, um, paying thirty percent of their income towards rent, because we have the vouchers.
And, uh, I think I might, thank you for that, my, my final, uh, statement, it sounds like to reclaim the green spaces in the area, you're going up on the, so going up your stack housing, like, if I could say.
A portion of the, the, uh, phase one is a three-story building, uh, currently, they're all one, one and two stories on-site. Uh, phase two will be three stories, which will open up green space, phase three will be more similar to what's there now with townhouse designs.
So are you like having, uh, a one family here, another family on top? Or is it?
Yes.
Oh, okay, because right now.
Right.
One, two, three, three stories, right?
That is, that is correct.
Cause presently, isn't it like, they have their own like spaces, individuals?
There, there are a lot of duplexes and triplexes currently, that they're set up more like, uh,
Flat.
Townhouses, yes.
So yours, it sounds like is more like that stacked apartment type?
It is more like apartments in those buildings, but it was a mixture, uh, most of the, uh, in phase one, for example, uh, it's mostly, uh, one and two-bedroom units, and, and just three, three-bedroom. So the, the bigger units will occur, the, the fours and, uh, bedroom units will occur, oh, three and fours in the, more in the townhouses.
Okay. I was gonna say, uh, gentlemen, just from how it looks on the drawings here, on the Henry Rough side, and the way that everything is facing inward, if you will, if I'm looking at this correctly, does this eliminate the on-street parking in that area now, since you're opening up green space, or how does that work?
We're still working on some of this, the master plan was, it was very conceptual, uh, we're working on phase one, but you are correct, at phase one, we probably don't need the on-street parking, uh, in phase one, because we'll actually have a, uh, a parking lot off-street.
I got you.
We're trying to, that's been an issue on the site, is the on-street parking, it sounds desirable. The residents don't really like it, it's, you know, so.
See, they do not like it? They do not, okay.
Any basic complex with snow, plowing, and garbage collection.
Well, so, yeah, that makes sense.
Some of the, the spaces that we're using, we're, we're trying to make it best for the resident experience. Uh, cause again, the feedback that they're providing us is how we come up with what, you know, will everybody be pleased, obviously not, but we try to take into account everybody's comments, but we don't do so much, because the funding will drive what we can do.
Correct. And I was just looking at it too, with, uh, the different, I guess you, you will story builders, and then just new construction overall and modernizing everything? We're talking about like surveillance and security protocols and things of that nature, you have, it looks like you'll be able to have a tighter grip on those types of things too, um, and, and tying in with our police department and things of that nature, when, or, you know, if anything were to occur, you know, medical emergency, things of that nature, um, versus, you know, now it's kind of hard trying to identify, will someone so went into that particular building, or whatever you might have saw or didn't see. particular building or whatever you might have saw or didn't see, so.
And to to your point, uh, Jim, all that is taken into account. You know, and when we try to come up with plans, um, it's conversations, again, these are all conceptual, but it's conversations with multiple stakeholders, you know, residents with the police force. Um, and you know, if if you all are familiar with the Lemoine site now, it's just, it's an antiquated style of public housing. Um, and we don't receive the funding to to keep it the way that it needs to be, and that's been historical over years, uh, and and housing authorities, it's just like any branch of federal government. So much is appropriated each year. So for years, we just have not received the funding and time at the time again, uh, it's two hundred and seventy-five units and and it's over a hundred and fifty vacant. Um, that I cannot bring back online because of the funding. So this is really the only route we have. And all housing authorities, I, all is a strong comment, but a lot of housing authorities across the country, um, this is what they do to survive because we don't really have the funding to keep up what we have. So it's a tough situation.
One final comment uh that I'll make before I turn it back over to my commissioners, um. I'm glad that you all provided us with this rendering.
Yes.
Because at one point in time, uh, you guys probably remember this, prior to the twenty nineteen election, um, the city of Inkster and the planning commission was accused of getting ready to demolish public housing to build a development that's happening next to it now. But you know what had happened was the aerial view was taken of it. It was just, you know, streets, satellite version, if you will. And it was easily confused because your residents and other persons in the community were just blowing us up left and right saying, y'all about to tear Inkster housing down, where the citizens gonna go and the sad and the other, and that was not the case. But because of the development that's happening right now, hey, y'all getting ready to enter phase one? I feel it coming back. So they gonna say, we told you so, they tearing it down right now, but.
We try to for the commission, we we're trying to be as transparent as possible. A lot of, it's a lot of unknowns.
Yeah.
This is based on funding that we have to apply for that's competitive. So uh, it's a lot of unknowns. We don't want to create a lot of anxiety and fear. But it will be tough. But I I think if if you know, we 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 do this the right way, we communicate the right way, which we're trying to do. Um, you know, everybody will be satisfied with the end product.
Absolutely. Um, Commissioner, uh, Hall, do you have something?
Good thing, uh, and over in Carlisle area, so all that's gonna be gone. You got, and you got, Carlisle Street is is missing, but yeah.
Oh, 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 it's this one, where it's we are taking out one street.
No, it's uh, and over Carlisle.
So Andover's at the top.
Andover's here.
Carlisle on North.
Oh, Carlisle.
Yeah, Carlisle.
The site only runs up to. That's something else.
Yeah, Carlisle run to uh Parkside.
When did the phase start? When phase one start?
That was my question.
Right.
We anticipate um first quarter of twenty twenty-three um applying with MISTA for um the tax credits. Um, as um we mentioned earlier, it's a competitive process, uh, but we're hoping that um we can get awarded tax credits and if we get awarded tax credits in twenty twenty-three, we probably will close sometime in December, financial closing. Sometime in December, with construction probably starting sometime in January of twenty twenty-four.
And this whole process, you anticipate phase one, two, and three to take approximately how long?
Well, we're gonna basically look at um phase one first. Um, and hopefully we'll start construction in twenty twenty-four. If we're successful with uh receiving tax credits. And then thereafter, we'll start um putting our financial packages together for phase two. And then putting, and if we're successful, we'll start construction on phase two and hopefully uh, we won't get hit by supply chains and and everything else and interest rate hikes. But um then we'll um go into um phase, phase three.
So at this point, we don't really have all of the capital to do.
N- n- no, we don't. We 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 are in the process of first um coming up with a um, a design and a budget that's financially feasible. And um, and then once we do that, applying for um the funding sources. Um, the biggest funding source, um, it's gonna be uh with MISTA and the low income housing tax credits. And if we get awarded uh with the low income housing tax credits, then we're on our way to something special.
Will you keep us updated accordingly, like once you get approved and like.
Oh, definitely. We we definitely wanna, um, as um, we said earlier, um, this is a transparent process. We work across the country in um communities across the country, and we want to make sure that we're transparent to everybody. Especially the residents of um Inkster and the stakeholders in Inkster and the youth here as well. Because we want to bring the youth into this process as well.
That's great.
Clarification, I thought the moment Parkside. Alrighty, um, anything else commissioners? Anything else for us, gentlemen?
Pushing forward, I'm I'm happy, I'm excited.
Well, you mentioned something about youth being involved. You wanted to get them involved. Is there some kind of something you could share with us on what level and how you were would be trying to bring them on board?
Yeah, um, you know, I always say that how could we redevelop communities if we don't engage the youth? Because the youth have a tendency to tilt the lens ninety degrees. And they'll be able to see some things that we can never ever see. You know, and that's why we have to in involve them and we're at an age now where we're not building this for us.
Right.
You know, we're building it for them and and our kids and our grandkids, so why not make sure that we involve them? And so we're looking at um, um, trying to bring the youth in with youth committees and asking them, what is it that they want to see happen here in in Inkster as well? And really sort of engaging them in um our table talks. Um, so we do monthly um table talks. Um, and it's headed by Dana Kristen, who's in the back there. And so we started these monthly table talks. We have one tonight. And um, it was great. And our next monthly table talk, we're inviting the youth um for the table talk with the youth. And we want to hear from them, what's, what e- excites them and and what do they want to see? And how do we engage them and get them involved? Um, and and really get them involved and not just um hearing them, but having a place where they are involved and and keeping them updated on where we are with our plans and and everything else. Yeah.
How, how are you getting that word out still, Hugh?
Well, we 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 had a great meeting um with the um resident services, council folks, I'm sorry. And so we said to them, um, you guys have a resident council, why not have a youth council? And let's form the youth council um as well. And so they were excited about that. And they basically said, hey, we're gonna uh talk to some of the youth and they're gonna invite the youth to um this table talk meeting. And that's where we're, we'll be looking at um asking them, do they want to form a youth council? And then starting to have these table talk meetings with with the youth as well.
These youth are basically coming from the affordable housing.
For, for, right.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
So we use our like social media.
I feel the grace. I know you're doing, I know you're on social media, right?
And Facebook and all that.
LinkedIn, Facebook, we got a new website.
Twitter.
Sorry.
Not Twitter, but. Yes.
We didn't have one.
Yeah, okay.
So we're just using different ways.
Yeah.
Have you been getting good response?
Well, we've done about thirty percent uh and when it comes to the surveys led by Dana Christian, which is good when you're talking about surveys, thirty percent. Um, but trying to engage the youth will be kind of some, a new concept. So we'll see how it goes. Uh, but you know, the the struggle is we're dealing with a high vacancy rate where we're at. And so and and a lack of trust that probably has been instilled over years.
Yeah.
So we're trying to break down those walls by doing some of the things we're doing. Uh, we've been pretty successful.
Okay, very good. Sounds great.
And thirty percent is good, especially with vacancies that you have when you talk about surveys, because people normally don't either.
Yeah. Alright, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you.
Police Department, did you have anything further for us? Nope. Oh, I'm sorry. I just meant in regards to, no. Okay. Card, uh, the floor is open for a motion to close the discussion of item B. Uh, Lemoine Gardens conceptual plan unit development. It's been properly moved and seconded. Is there, I don't think there's any further discussion, is there? Alrighty, here and none, all in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. We are down to item C. This is approved of the twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four planning commission calendar. Um, city planner, you have a floor, or the floor is open for discussion.
I, I believe the calendar before we do need formally adopted. Except when filed and received. So this is a better protocol uh on the other days.
Uh, commissioners, was there anything that you saw?
That was not.
Yeah. I don't, I don't think it is, but, okay. Alrighty, the floor is open for a motion to approve uh the request of the twenty twenty-four planning commission calendar.
I do have a question, just I, and I didn't look at the calendar at all with these, but I do understand what's happening, but just so we're clear. Um, I know that we meet every fourth Thursday of the month. So December twelfth is because.
So because the state company February first and third, and typically the fourth falls close enough to Christmas that you want to move it. So we're preemptively moving it so we won't have to jog our schedule when we get close to December and realize, oh no, everyone should be out of town.
Got you. Okay, so that's like the second two. Second Monday, I'm sorry, okay.
Alrighty, um. Floor is open for a motion to approve the request of twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four planning commission calendar. It's been properly moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Here and none, all in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. We're down to miscellaneous. Um. We don't have anything physi- physically listed, but.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Uh, so the Parks and Recreation Master Plan Public Review Period uh officially begins December first, but it is available on the website now. In the public review period is through December thirtieth. Uh, so the goal plan is posted on the website to go through and review all of the goals, objectives, and strategies for the next five years of Parks and Rec development. And then email comments to the email address provided on the flyer, we smith at mck.com before January second.
Thank you. Anything further? That's it, commissioners, anything in regards to that? Alrighty, uh, here and none. Then also we need to confirm on uh at this time, which option of the zoning ordinance for marijuana update the commission wants to bring forward to city council. So if Ms. Dixon, if you want to, I guess, expand on that a little bit more for the commissioners.
So in the zoning ordinance, um, we presented two options. Option one has the special land uses and separation requirements that we currently have in the city. And it also adopted the green zone, which eliminated separation of operations from light businesses. And then option two eliminated marijuana uses everywhere in the city except for in the green zone. And that were only the retailers, the designated establishments and the micro businesses. So uh, one is very, very restricted. Uh, there was some discussion around wanting to restrict almost entirely marijuana. And then one was around kind of the larger discussion we've been having around just modifying our our current ordinance. So just want to make sure we're bringing forward the correct options to city council.
Alright, I got you. Um, I think, you know, just because, as you already said earlier, a lot of this is new in the state, not necessarily having a hundred percent teeth in it and it being fluid, I think at this time, and this is just my opinion, the actual one is still a safeguard for us. Because we still go through all of these particular steps. Um, and we have multiple say-so's versus just be like, what normally happens is soon as someone sees a CBD shop, they call and they say, would you put a dispensary there? And it says, not a dispensary. But it still gives us teeth in the game versus just boom, 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 boom. And then we trying to come back to the drawing board again and put teeth back into it. I think it's best to have a teeth. You know, as you get older in age and and losing one by one or like a a child growing up when the news are coming in. Um, versus just gutting the whole thing and saying, hey, what happens, happens. So what do you guys think?
Go ahead.
So for what I'm, if I'm understanding you correctly, you're saying you want to be able to have the, what we have in place now?
In addition to the green zone.
In addition to the green zone. So that still gives uh an open door for if we so desire to approve something elsewhere, we can. Is that what you're saying?
Uh, so yes, you would still go through the special land uses that you currently go through. And with our business license regulations changing, we wouldn't have this issue with race to the finish. We would know this person's establishing their business at this address right off the bat, and it would establish that thousand foot buffer. And because of that, and the fact that you're still only in B two, you're not in the TCD, you're going to spread out the businesses in the rest of the city where it will quickly, you know, the radius will fill up and which was the original intention of, you know, the thousand foot separation buffer. So keeping those in mind, and now with the new updated business regulations, we'll hopefully clean up some of these pain points that we've had while still creating some limits on how many businesses will exist in the rest of the city. Um, and in addition, we've heard a lot at the city council public hearings about people in Inkster, people wanting to have more social equity and hopefully this would allow a little more opportunity for those individuals to open a business by not restricting it strictly to that group itself.
Well, kind of.
I'm just gonna say it because you know, I love my clarity, right?
No, go ahead, absolutely.
And I think I understand, but I just want to say it, I'll ask you, I can hear what my brain is thinking, because I think I, so because you said we had two options. Okay, so the option that I like, I don't know which one it is because I'm not looking at it right now, but I know from what I, when I read. We're definitely gonna keep what we have, and what we have right now is the thousand foot buffer and the three hundred feet buffer as well too, right? That's the, the thousand foot is from.
Entity to entity.
Right, and then the three hundred is to a church or residential, that's what we have right now. And that's in the regular parts, that's in the, all the parts where marijuana can be.
So, because I know you want clarity.
Yes.
Really clear.
Yes.
So for, this is how it is now, and this will be keeping, maintaining it. The three hundred feet from residential districts only applies to growers, excess growers and processors.
Yeah, okay.
Does not apply to retailers or any other type of marijuana business. That is how the current ordinance is.
Right now, it's like that anyway, okay.
And then the state requires all marijuana businesses be at least four hundred feet from drug-free zones, which are churches, schools, parks, childcare facilities. We've defined drug-free zones in the ordinance. And the city has made it five hundred, and so we've continued that. So that would be, that applies across the board to the green zone as well, because that's a state requirement. You can't have them within five hundred feet of a drug-free zone.
The five hundred feet applies to the green zone, not the rest of that.
Applies to everything.
Also, even in the green zone, they have to be the thousand foot?
Only the five hundred feet.
That's what I was saying, only the fact, that's what I said, okay.
Green zone outside of the green zone, regardless of where you're at, if you're a marijuana business, you have to be five hundred feet from a drug-free zone. That's state law. We could reduce it down to four hundred feet, but that's, that's the wiggle room.
Okay.
State requires four hundred feet. Now, the thousand feet is from, would be. Now, the thousand feet is from, would be outside the green zone. So if you're a grower or processor, it's a thousand feet from other growers or processors.
Okay.
Or if you're a retailer or micro business, it's a thousand feet from another retailer or micro business. So it's keeping those, that similar business, um, but only outside of the green zone. The green zone, the only separation is the five hundred feet from drug-free zones. So hopefully that's.
It does, yeah. But they still have to, even if they're in the green zone, they still have to come to, to come to go through the planning and all of that. Okay. Yes, okay.
Now, we, I, for sake of clarity as well, we are, uh, adding two new, um, I guess what we call uses, the temporary events, which has a whole nother application process that has to go before city council. So that technically is a, a permitted use, is what we're kind of classifying it as. Again, this is all new. And most cities haven't even established language around temporary that. But because they have to go toward city council for their application, functions similarly to a special land use. And then the educational research, because you have to be licensed at an educational entity and institution, and then apply to the state to be able to have an educational research. There's so much tight control around that use. We also provide that that was a permitted use. Again, within certain districts, they still have to have their site planned. But, uh, I want for excess of clarity to just make sure that we're all on the same page with that.
And this one is option one.
That is all option one.
I'm glad you clarified that, cuz I, I was wondering who was giving the, cuz I saw it was an exa- they were, there was a, an exact exception for the, 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 the learning institution or whatever, and the events. And I was like, well, who's establishing the standards or, and how are they being regulated? If there was an exception, so thank you for that, that, that clarified some things. But I was also, you guys are good with the marijuana, just kinda really having the ability to prop up, pop up all around this, the city.
But it can. That's why we have this. It just can't pop up. You can't just.
I know, we, I mean, with us being able to have the ability to regulate it, I understand that part as far as when you say they have to be able to, uh, be within the certain radiuses and all of that stuff. But, um, is there a cap on any, a moratorium at any point of how many we will have?
So I, I guess before we get to that, cuz you, you posed a great question. Uh, now that Jane has provided more clarity, um, in regards to option two in the green zone, it just be, that is just restricted solely there? And do they still have to go through the SOU process? Okay, then I revert back from what I said.
And then that, so what now?
So option two is the green zone where we would say, hey, any other, uh, cannabis applicants that come to the city of Ainxter, whether they be retail for adult use, I'm sorry, or, uh, medical, they would have to go specifically to the green zone, still go through the process. They couldn't just pop up all around the city. I was, I was thinking a little bit different.
So with option two, in, in keeping with what the chair is saying, what happens to what we've currently have? That stays the same. That's still, so the only two differences is the green zone part.
Option two would eliminate all marijuana uses. Growing processors would no longer be allowed in the city. Secure transporter, safety compliance facilities would not be allowed in the city, but they're not allowed in the green zone. And we were to restrict all marijuana use to the green zone with, uh, provisioning center, retailers, micro businesses, consumption establishments being restricted to that area as, uh, a technique to really limit the amount of marijuana establishments that are allowed in the city. We've seen in other cities where you have a cap, it's been litigated and it, it's not stood up in court. So creating just a blanket cap, you can only have this many businesses, not an effective way in terms of money goes to court. So this is a way to really restrict, uh, where the businesses would be and ultimately they beat themselves out, uh, you know, as, uh, time goes on. They were just restricted to that area. Uh, so any existing growing processors or other, you know, you have the flower bowl, you through.
Grandpa.
Their grandfather just, they would become non-conforming uses, uh, but they would continue to exist. Legally, they just would be non-conforming persons.
Um, it just, and I can't recall, but when Caitlin was here, just to give you all some background, the talks had started and had been introduced, but it had never really come before the body of full for a vote. But we talked about entertainment overlay district and that same exact area. And so now with the green zone and all that being before us, it's actually moving forward in a more full capacity, if you will.
And to build on that, so the master plan did highlight this entertainment district, which is why I'm pulling from that using that kind of as a, a background logic in the piece I need to talk about it before the previous plan. Positioning the marijuana green zone in that area kind of is consistent with that master plan piece.
And so it sounds like this is the only real way we have to legally.
Have, keep, keep control, keep some kind of.
Love it.
Well.
What goes where?
I still wanna highlight, if you go with option one, which is, you know, things are mostly the same, but you have the green zone. You're still using the thousand foot buffer, which we've cleaned up the business licensing process so that actually can be effective way of limiting how many there are. So there is still that component of it that restricts it. It's just what level of restriction are you, what's your objective? If you want it nowhere else in the city, okay, suggest option two. Or let's discuss what the happy middle is between option one and option two. Or do we see how option one goes now that we have a better pinpoint to where these businesses are and creating those separations?
Cool. Thank you.
I, I'm, I, I guess I don't really totally understand option two. I totally understand option one, and I feel very comfortable with option one. Um, but I guess because I'm not clear on option two, it's making me just wonder, am I making it, am I thinking right?
If you go to your back your packet, it's page seven.
Okay.
Um, it's about five pages in from the last page, there are options to the table. And this option I agree is, you know, very, very restrictive.
Very restrictive, option two is.
Very restricted, and it's coming as a result of the planning department receiving feedback and comment that you really wanna restrict marijuana. And this is a very restrictive way to do so. So again, it doesn't, I, I mean, I don't wanna have open a can of worms. There could be some sort of middle ground between option one and option two. If you're not comfortable with option two and you're not comfortable with option one, this is a little bit more of what you have, and then very much extreme, uh, on the restriction.
But won't option one allow us because of the buffers? Because we know that there can only be, so when, when you talk about, we don't wanna floodgate our city, which we don't. We don't wanna floodgate the city with any type of marijuana businesses. If we, if we keep with option one, having the buffers, having the, um, uh, um, and they can only be in certain areas anyway, certain, uh, zones anyway. That kinda helps us right there. It's like, we don't even really have to even worry about it too much because you can't come over here on Somerset or any other residential area or any other areas that have these residents there. And so we don't even have to worry about that part. And then the parts that it can be, the other zones that it can be, we have the buffers. And then it, and then it, we have the green zone where we still have the five hundred foot buffer. They still have to come to planning and then, of course, approved by city council.
And one more point to your kind of, I'm thinking, so the one thing I did wanna say that we did update, growers and processors in the current ordinance are allowed to be within, however, they can be next to each other. There's no separation buffer between growers and processors and another grower and processor. So by adding this thousand feet, we're spacing out growers and processors as well as the three hundred feet currently in the ordinance, it's written as door to door from a structure within a residential district. Well, that's complicated and a little hard to administer, but the main reason why this is getting cleaned up to just be three hundred feet from a residential district is you have areas where there's a lot of vacant parcels that don't have a structure.
Yes.
But now we're eliminating the structure clause and saying, you can't be within three hundred feet of any residential district. So then, when those sites get redeveloped, where eventually we don't have marijuana processor or grower sitting right next to them. So that's, that's a little bit further step back as well. It's, you know, um, my new kind of detail, but there is some extra protocol in there to create a excessive buffer separation from those residential areas.
Okay, okay. All right, so we have to come to a consensus, guys.
And if we do option one, or whatever, whichever option, I'm saying option one, cuz that's what I'm. Um, we can still come back later and say, we can amend this a little bit. We're not just stuck with it, it's right.
Right.
Okay.
That's what I was gonna ask about.
I just, yeah.
But you could do that with both of them, couldn't you?
Right.
We could amend and even enlarge the green zone if we needed to.
Or you could add growers and processors in. However, you wanna work that.
Okay.
Could work from a more restricted place, or you could work from a less restricted.
Okay.
Again, it would be our recommendation, to the council either capacity, to say, hey, we feel this needs to be changed. Uh, but then, of course, they have the final sentence, so.
Absolutely.
Um, did you guys have any more?
So how do we word this when we're talking to our citizenry? And we make this.
You don't have to study, you better study it every day.
The lady comment, pitchforks and torches.
You said, I mean, you can honestly, you know, for, and let me start and say, we've added more teeth to it. And we're looking to build, to continue adding as you continue voicing concerns. Um, I think really our, the, the thing we're trying to safeguard is the tax dollars because every step we take, and like Jane was saying, in a, in a different capacity is there's no real way, and we've been told this, that we can legally cap it. We used to have a cap in there, but then when that business license changed, that cap was removed, so everything opened up. I, and some of my colleagues are still under impression, we had a cap. So when we started voting for stuff here, I'm like, what are we doing? I thought we had a cap, and everybody's like, what cap are you talking about? And I had to replay it, and I had to say, wait a minute. I was so tunnel vision on what some of us wanted in the ordinance that when it, their business license, when it changed, that was no longer there. Um, and then the attorneys had always said, well, anybody can sue, because like you said, they're litigating, and they just continue challenging it and take you up the line, you know, of the ladder in court. And then you stuck in a city like ours that are in financial strength, saying, do we continue paying our legal team to fight for what we think is right and burning thousands of thousands, thousands of dollars to get two years down the line and say, okay, we didn't drop the cap, or, you know, which way do we go?
And the other thing I love too is that the green zone also helps out with that race to the finish thing that we was really, really concerned about. That was a really big deal. And I really liked that.
No, I'd have been a referee.
I'm sure you are. I'm sure you are. So I think, and then, I mean, it, that green zone gives us balance. It gives us time, and we're still being somewhat fair to everyone that's coming to apply. Um, and we still are, you know, having some type of limitations that all of this stuff is not coming bombard our city at one time.
And just to add that, I wanna remember that the business license is also having a lot of to add to it. So.
Okay.
People, you have to be in one of those four categories. You either have to.
Right.
From one of those one hundred eighty-four communities that have been disenfranchised historically by marijuana laws and convictions. You have to have a conviction yourself, or you have to have that social equity all-star program. Or you have to be a medical marijuana caregiver for, for two years. So right there, the, those are some hoops that everyone has to jump through even to get to the starting line. And, you know, what I have heard at the public hearings around recent marijuana businesses is people want more for the city. And so if you don't reach those three, which is assuming that you've been disenfranchised and it's bringing some equity to you, if you go in number four in that all-star program, there's a corporate spend plan that you have to create when you give back a portion of your profits to the community. You have to designate how you're going to do so.
Yes.
And so that's bringing that component in as well, where you're getting some of that equity back. But there are gonna be people who come to the table who see those requirements who say.
I can do, yes.
And so that's eliminating some of those developers as well.
Yes.
Like hopefully meeting actual ones that you really want to bring to the meeting.
And, you know, if, not to belabor anymore, I'm glad you brought up that option number four, cuz we've had people saying, in, in, in just different residents, well, they need to start giving us money, and we always say, we can't actually just take it, or they can't.
Well, we can like dangle it.
Or it can't be, you know, they say, well, we're gonna donate all our, you know, the ten, twenty percent of proceeds to this one church. Well, what about the rest of the churches? Um, just like the banks, their financial institutions, I'm sorry, when they're in the communities that are federally regulated, uh, they have the CRA, Community Reinvestment Act. And that is something that we challenged Chase about when they decided to leave the city, and we sat there in the tip room and said, wait a minute, you guys never acted on the CRA. And it was, you could hear, you could drop the whatever, hey, oh, hey, and hear it, okay? That's, so.
Absolutely.
I'm glad you brought that up.
Yes.
Um, I'm hoping that gave you some background on when communicating with the constituents about the teeth being in there for the business license more so, and as well as, um, the information we're here to have here, so. Um, did, I, we need to, I guess, poll and see, or how's everybody feeling? Are you option one, option two?
I'm option one.
Okay. Cuz we need to articulate it for city council.
For what, what we just discussed, I can be flexible with that, the, with, with option one.
I was feeling the same way, so I, you know, I, I was thinking, X, Y, Z, we haven't said X, Y, and Z, and one restricted, but we can go with option one, and we can always change.
And, and, and I, I guess, at some point, we can see how that goes because I don't know, it seems like we have a target on our back for the marijuana industry, and everybody's coming.
We do.
Cuz I think if we do that too, we're gonna be right back to where we were in the beginning, like when we put all these restrictions on it. Then we got all these people, we just got, then you tell my refereeing, it's just, it's, it's just putting us almost back in the same place, where we're trying to balance this and bring some, you know, balance. So because it's here, we have to figure out how to make this work for everybody.
I will, just as an anecdote, I did talk to some people called, we wanna open the marijuana business, the higher guard. You know, here's the spot, and I said, sorry, can't because you're within a thousand feet of another one. So there is, that, it does have.
I love that.
You're saying, oh.
Can't do it. And we got the four things you have to go through and.
And, yeah, and I'm glad you did that because what happens is when you say that, and they've already bought the building, it did X, Y, and Z, then they challenge us, and they say, well, I wanna go to the ZBF and get a, uh, you know, an appeal of this. Yeah, and change it and modify it, or I want you to lower this particular footage so that I can come in because it's only twenty-five feet, but you know, for one, you gotta do it. Um, so we got three people, uh, Commissioner Willis and Commissioner Hall. What do y'all think? One, what you thinking? Okay, well, there, there we go. We've been articulated to say that option one is the one that we would like to recommend to city council. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Um, that was under miscellaneous, and now we are down, now we proceed to item, I'm sorry, did anybody else have anything for miscellaneous? No, all right. We now proceed to item nine, number nine, second hearing of the public for items not on the agenda. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak topics not included on tonight's agenda, speak about topics not included on tonight's agenda, um, at this time. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak? Please come to the podium and, of course, state your name for the record.
I'll make it short.
Okay. Good evening.
My name is Sam Sala with Berkshire Development. I think I might be somewhat premature to come before you folks and address, uh, a project that our company's encountering. Uh, the seventeen acres, uh, at the Stratford Place. Yeah, we, uh, we're putting a proposal. Yeah, we, uh, we're putting a proposal together, uh, as you folks should, are probably well aware. Uh, architects and site engineers are very, very busy and they take a lot of time. Uh, I'm hoping to have something before you folks, probably in January, February. Uh, we're, we're dealing with a, a pretty tough condition in Stratford right now. There, uh, they have an abandoned building there that's kind of, uh, 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 an absolute blight to the community. And our project and, uh, we're not getting any cooperation from the HOA at all. Uh, we've offered to demolish the building at no cost to them. Uh, and they refuse to, uh, acknowledge our email and even discuss it with us. I think the problem stems from the fact that the HOA, the president and a maintenance company that's based in Hollow, Michigan. Their attitude is, it sinks through Michigan. They don't have the financial, uh, ability to enforce their regulations. And the building department, uh, i- is lacking help. And I think the sooner that word gets out that your building department carries more weight than probably the police department. To get rid of all the blight in the city of Inkster, uh, you're gonna see more money coming into the city for development. Uh, our initial, um, investment into that, uh, seventeen acres, just to clear the land. It's gonna be about one point four million. However, uh, talking to a couple of people in the city, uh, we, unless we get rid of that. That blighted building back there, which is a terrible eyesight. Uh, I don't think we'd be going forward, uh, any further. But we'll see what happens with the next few days. Uh, we're trying like med, we've offered to rebuild that, uh, uh, those townhouses, that building. And they haven't responded to us. I think there's some major fraud going in there between the board and the, um, the maintenance company. Uh, leadership management. We just finished up a project in Fort Lauderdale where we actually got the board members to resign. And two of them, Steve Temkin and his girlfriend and brother, actually packed up and left, moved out of the, uh, put their units up for sale and left. That's how much fraud was going on. Uh, the homeowner association fees that were, uh, they were charging six hundred ninety dollars per home. Came down to two hundred and eighty. Don't quote me on that, but historically. Homeowner associations and maintenance companies, they don't care about what goes on in a development. They care about their pocketbooks. They don't even care about the city with their, it's, it's the bottom line for them. Uh, leadership management is managing twenty-five associations right now. Don Bowman, who is the owner of the associations. They're all in Plymouth, Plymouth Township, one in Canton, and the rest of them are in Byron, Michigan, upper influential cities. When one of the board directors told me. Inkster is, ought to be lucky that we're even maintaining the complex. I responded to them, well, you're, you're taking in about eighteen thousand dollars a year. Out of those fifty-four homeowners. That, that said it all to me. And it's a terrible situation. Stratford, uh, development is a very nice development. It's starting to fall apart, starting with that, um, that blighted, uh, abandoned building that sits there. There's illegal dumping going on in a seventeen acres. I was kinda surprised when I, when I went back there with my engineers. It's not pretty. It's not pretty. I think it's incumbent upon each and every one of you folks, uh. Uh, I mean, you're the heart of the city, along with the building department, to some way, somehow. Uh, secure that area and protect the homeowners. Some of the stories that the homeowners told me was just awful.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry, I wanna say, one, I'm glad that you.
I'm sorry?
I want, I was going to say, I'm glad that you have expressed the interest in developing the rest of that. Because I've walked back there before, um, and, and knocked on doors and whatnot, and I know the building you're talking about, that's dilapidated. And then even with the infrastructure that's already back there underground or whatnot, all the trees and stuff have grown up. So it is gonna cost a lot, because soon as you pull one of them trees that's deeply rooted in the infrastructure, the infrastructure's gotta be replaced too. Um, I'm sad that you have not been able to get in contact with the right person. Um, hopefully we could send something, cause we're just a planning commission, we're not the city council. We could send something over, you know, city wise too, that maybe there's some leverage on the city side. Because I feel we had something to do with that development years ago. And I don't know where the blockade is where they won't continue the development or what fell through. So I'm just happy to hear that you're even, um, taking those steps in the right direction of trying to develop that. Because people have asked us all the time about what's going on with that, why is it dilapidated? What's gonna be the future of it? And it's just kinda been one of those days, nobody really knew.
So I, I, I appreciate your support. I really do. But certainly, um, uh, your support and maybe if we can get the, uh, building department to exercise. The Michigan residential building code for blight. The owners and even the homeowners association is going to move. They haven't, the homeowners association don't even know what a building violation is. They're just living there, uh, milking the present owners. Uh, if you heard some of the stories, it's terrible, but. I'm not gonna tell you I'm here as a humanitarian. I am. Would I make the money, uh, that we can make if we built those, uh, independent homes in another, uh, city or another county? Absolutely. Uh, I think Inkster has so much to offer, so much to offer. The heart and soul again is the, uh, building department, yourselves and city council. If you take a look at the corner, uh, the west corner of Michigan and Inkster, tho- those stretch of buildings right there, next to the state of Michigan building. If those buildings were demolished, there's enough acreage back there to invite a couple of good franchises. Once people see development, good money, you're gonna see more and more development coming in. Uh, not to take up more of your time, I can remember Warren Avenue from Wyoming. And, uh, Warren Avenue was. Basically a, a dilapidated building after building after building. There's a huge migration. Now you'll see Warren Avenue is probably one of the most populated and busiest streets in Wayne County. And it stretches, it has now stretched across Telegraph into Dearborn Heights and Garden City. Ford Road, the same thing. Michigan Avenue is right there on the, on the cusp. You've got people who are buying buildings and sitting on them. Hoping to get a million dollars for the property and the reason why they're sitting on them. The building department is not enforcing its code. Um, the, the one building, I forgot the cross street, right on Michigan, uh, right next door to the Dairy Queen, if you're familiar with that, right there. The gentleman bought that building for thirty thousand dollars. He wants a million dollars for it right now.
You talking about the brown building?
At the cost of the citizens of Inkster, Michigan. He's asking for a million dollars for that property. He'll never get it. I knocked on her door. I knocked on that door to try to buy that whole block all the way up, uh, to the, uh, to Inkster Road. But it was a futile effort. It's like, it was like putting cement, uh, uh, on top of water. It's not gonna happen. But I appreciate your support and, um, I'd like to get ahold of the city attorney and, um, see if we can't get their help as well. I, I have offered to pay the, um, uh, any attorney fees that the city, uh, is invoiced to make this happen. The city of Inkster deserves vested people, vested residents. I can tell you, banks, insurance companies, and the federal government, Fannie Mae and federal, uh, Fannie Mae. Do not like condominiums. They don't like them. I was part of the Lafayette Towers when they first went up. I was a youngster forty years ago. Take a look at that condominium now, they're no longer condominiums. They've turned into a project of rentals and one building has remained as a condominium. Riverfront, uh, 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 development I'm talking about. I was part of that about forty, forty-five years ago. But any support you guys can render, I'd appreciate it. And, uh, we're gonna keep pushing forward. We've been discouraged a little bit, but we're gonna keep pushing.
Can you, uh, leave your contact information? Well, Commissioner Willis has a question for you, but can you leave your contact information with our planning department as well? And I'll get it from him and I'll just forward that over.
Appreciate it.
Commissioner Willis.
A question, seventeen acres, like what?
I'm sorry, being around heavy machinery all day.
Uh, the se- the seventeen acres that's behind, uh, those, uh, uh, buildings. Uh, what, what, what is your plan as far as development if you were to get them?
The seventeen acres?
Right.
I proposed, we're not gonna go with the homeowners association. We're gonna go between with eighteen hundred to twenty-five hundred square foot homes. We do not build a Pulte home, a Toll Brother home, a D R, uh, a D R Horton home. We build quality homes that will last a hundred years. We use clay brick. We don't use brick that are, uh, built with white ash. We, uh, our homes are quality, absolute quality. People don't like homeowners association. I can tell you on gross point, if your grass goes. A minimum of three or four inches and it's a residential property. The enforcement officer puts a violation notice on your door and he tells you, you've got seven days to cut your lawn. He comes back in seven days, the city will cut it. And they'll give you thirty days to pay the invoice. If you don't pay the invoice, it goes on your taxes. Dearborn does the same thing. Matter of fact, all the major cities. But what do you need a homeowners association for when you've got a city? Uh, and an enforcement officer to enforce the, uh, your code for maintaining your home? HOAs are a terrible, terrible, terrible entity. We don't know how they ever gotten existence, but many of them have folded. Many of them have gone to prison. Uh, many of them have bankrupted. But, uh, we're looking, we're looking real, uh, uh, positive about that seventeen acres. We need to get a hundred and twenty homes on there to make it worth our while. And I promise you, once you guys walk through them, you may wanna buy one of them.
All righty, well, thank you very much, commissioners. Did you have anything additional?
Thank you for your time.
No problem, thank you.
If you don't mind, I'll give you one of my business time.
Absolutely. All righty, at two. At this time, the floor is open for a motion to adjourn. Second, probably moved in second. All in favor? All the pa- um, all the polls, motion passed. The time is eight twenty-six PM. This meeting stands adjourned.
Thank you very much.